Hey, everyone, welcome to the September sixteenth, Pawtucket City Commission Meeting. We're gonna have an opening roll call. Commissioner Eskelson?
Here.
Commissioner Faunce?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenman?
Here.
Commissioner Renad?
Here.
Commissioner Bruggerman?
Here.
Commissioner Vitale?
Here.
And Commissioner Klowe Jay is here as well. First order will be approval of minutes from August nineteenth.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to have them amended as part of the minutes when I record at the holden. The council, um, Thomas Gregor was here talking to us last week, and it was not part of me minutes. So we'd like to chat with him amended with what that he was here.
Motion has been made to amend the August nineteenth.
A second?
Meeting minutes seconded by Commissioner Vitale. Roll call vote, Commissioner Eskelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Faunce?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenman?
Yes.
Commissioner Renad?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruggerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes.
And Commissioner Klowe Jay agrees, yes. First item on the agenda is the ninety-four Mashassick Street preliminary plan approval extension. It is recommended that this item be tabled and postponed as the applicant is not present. The board, committee staff.
Madam Chair, so as far as the timeline goes, the applicant had requested the extension in August and was not able to come to last meeting or to continue to this meeting. The clock continues to roll on that one year. So our recommendation is to table this until they are ready to appear before the board. For instance, if this goes all the way to July of next year, twenty twenty-six, that would mean the one-year extension is good for one month. So it really doesn't matter if they're here tonight or eight months from now. So our recommendation is to table this item and not put it back on the agenda until they're ready to be heard.
Vote is down.
Recommendation has been made to table and postponed the Mashassick Street preliminary plan approval. I will entertain a motion to, from committee members, to table.
Madam Chair, before we, I guess, the motion first, then I have a question for staff.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Vitale.
I'll sec. Second.
That's seconded by Commissioner Renad. Roll call vote to table. Commissioner Eskelson?
Discussion.
There should be discussion first, Robert's rules.
Regarding tabling.
Or just Don Grebby's rules.
The applicant is, the applicant is not present, so at this point it's gonna be tabled until the applicant is present.
Listen to the public!
There should be debate. Go on the record, what are you afraid of?
Table.
Commissioner Faunce?
Table.
Commissioner Greenman?
No.
Commissioner Renad?
Table.
Commissioner Bruggerman?
No.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes.
Mashassick Street has been tabled and postponed at this point.
There should be debate.
I have a, I just have a quick question. It's a question for staff about this whole thing, and that is just basically if, if the extension is already happening, then what are we even voting? What were we even being asked to vote on? If they already had the extension, what were they asking us to approve or deny? Because it feels like if they've already got it, what are, what are we even doing here?
No, that's, that's not, that's not the case. Through the chair, um, this, this is a, the preliminary approval was approved in twenty twenty-two, so it's good for two years, and then they have two one-year extensions that are by right under, under state law. And these usually presented as, uh, you know, a, an update by the developer in the, in the planning commission about where their project stands. These are very pro forma type of reviews. They are absolutely not unwinding of approvals. You cannot deny a project through this, this extension of time process. So they're within the, they're within the timeframe to request their, their second one-year extension. And as I said earlier, um, they need to appear before this commission before, you know, August of next year to get, to get that extension. However, the time is winding down on that extension. They're not going to extend it another twelve months after that, uh, that vote. So when the applicant's ready to be heard within that timeframe, we can, we can have a discussion, but they're not here. So that's why we were gonna table it until they're ready to get back here, instead of continuing this month to month, which is, is not productive for anyone.
Can we testify so you please hear us?
There's no discussion on a postponed and tabled item as the applicant is not present.
But the public is.
Next item on the agenda.
For this meeting, we would like to at least address you.
We're giving input to you, not to the chair.
Listen to the public!
With the applicant not present and the items being tabled, we cannot take comments from the public.
Not true. What law? Not true. Under what law are you doing that? Do we have to file yet another open meetings complaint against this failed corrupt administration?
What law?
Attorney, what law could you delay? Was public comment noticed?
This is not a public hearing. Okay, this is an agenda item.
An agenda item on?
And public comments are at the purview of the, of the planning commission. Okay?
On, on, on citation, please.
Excuse me, when we continue an item, it's our practice that we do not discuss the item without the applicant, and it is their application present. So that's, we're continuing this, it's been, it's voted to table.
Can you ever citation?
If it ever comes back.
Are you following Robert's rules?
If it ever comes back.
Are you following Robert's rules?
I'm not answering any more questions.
Of course not, because.
That have been yelled to us.
Because you work for Don Grebby, you don't have to answer questions.
We have to move on.
We walked out on the city council.
Next item on the agenda is a transfer of ownership of city-owned property at five seven five Fountain Street to the Pawtucket Redevelopment Agency.
Madam Chair, I just worry that we're violating city, the city charter. That's my, that's my concern. So the city charter, Article, Article nine specifically talks about public input periods and requires boards and commissions to have them. This is in state law, this is city charter. And under Part B, Section one, um, Part E, the city planning commission is on that list. And so I, I just wanna make sure that we are doing our duty as planning commissioners, that we are following the city charter. I'm happy to listen to staff counsel on that, but I just wanna make sure that we are following the, the rules set forth in the city charter and not opening ourselves up to any kind of appeal or liability and not opening up the city to appeal or liability.
We will have public input when the applicant is present and when the item is brought before the commission. At this point, it's being tabled.
Under what law, it's not taking me down.
By what law are you voting?
Excuse me, excuse me. We are, there will be a time for public input. Unfortunately, the item that was taken off the agenda
Under what law are you doing that? We're not listening to you.
All right, well then.
You'll still get your sweetheart deal from the mayor.
That's, that's the problem, that's the problem, that you don't wanna listen to the comments that we have. But what happens is.
You're making up the rules as you go along.
There will be public input.
Oh, thank you.
Not on the item.
If the King May Dean weren't allowed to comment on this public comment.
That was not on the agenda as been postponed. There will be no public input on that.
It isn't on the agenda, you're lying.
But there will be on any other item on the, on the agenda that you wanna speak on, that's fine, but not the one that was postponed.
Under what law?
You seem more concerned with protecting the outside developer than you are with the residents of Pawtucket who pay the salary here and his employees. You make absolutely no sense. You're, you're all turning commissions again, Reese, and, and by all sense that you have to have public comments. It doesn't matter whether they're here or not. Some people are here to think they can fix.
Unfortunately, we're an attorney, we should be very better than that.
Are you an attorney?
Thank you.
Educate us, are you an attorney?
Thank you, Bob.
Are you an attorney?
I gotta go back to work for you, sir. I'm on the commission.
Okay.
And this is the rules that we have.
No bless, oblige.
Thank you. Thank you.
You'll still get your sweetheart deal from the mayor.
Is a transfer of ownership of city-owned property at five seven five Fountain Street to Pawtucket Redevelopment Agency. Staff?
Madam Chair, we have Mark Gudrow to discuss this, this item.
Hi there, I'll start by introducing myself. All right, I'll start by introducing myself. Mark Gudrow, I'm the community development manager for the city of Pawtucket. And I've come here this evening to talk to you about what's, I believe, really a very mundane topic, but, um.
Yeah, look around, look at the faces of people.
This is the most corrupt, unprincipled people.
You're coming out like our president! How were you on the floor when you were voted out from the council?
I came here, I came here after an acute stroke, and I managed to get here just to be here because I believe that children have a right to have a park in which to, in which to play in and that families have a, have a place to gather. And you're shameful!
This is ridiculous.
I have never seen a government which is so blatantly ignorant and racist and, and, and ineffectual.
And all you play a hand in that! All you play a hand in that! That's on you!
Shame on you!
That's on you!
Shame on you!
You don't want to hear from the public! How many more meetings? Not a shame! How many more meetings you wanna schedule and reschedule until, until you exhaust people? And then magically, Mr. Karlik will show up, you'll push it through in the middle of the night like everything that happens here in Pawtucket because you all work for the mayor. You don't work for these people, you work for the mayor.
Because it doesn't work for them.
Because you won't listen to the public! We have two men of conscience here, two. You! And he's on the board! Shame! Voted out by us citizens! You have two people of conscience here. God bless you both.
And one person on this council, and the rest of you are shameless and corrupt. And in a pocket of a mayor who is absolutely corrupt.
Come on, shame! That design that you're, that you're extending, they don't even have the legal rights to develop it, so what are you possibly extending?
That is precisely what I talked about. I can see you with all the faces. You being asked to consider something that they can't acquire. They can't acquire it. You people approved it.
No, you have no principle!
We wanna speak!
You have no principle!
Let us speak! Let us speak! Let us speak! Let us speak! Let us speak!
At the Platteville Commission, I'll read the agenda item.
Let us speak! Let us speak! Let us speak!
Hear your folks at the winter apartment!
Let us speak!
Hear your folks speaking for a change!
Let us speak!
He's willing to conduct business in the manner that you are, so why would you allow him to speak?
Okay, so, thank you all. I'm here to represent a very mundane is.
How mundane is it? How much money is the Pawtucket Development?
I'm so glad we're both solving the houses.
Shut up, this?
Madam Chair.
This is what my taxes pay for?
We should call it.
We know that people do it here. You need to read that, the only reason you talk to us is because we're not going in over agency. Let us speak! Guy voted out, he's on a board.
Let us speak!
Mr. Vitale, your, your deals are safe. You'll still get your rights and privileges with the mayor if you do the right thing and, come on, we all know. Can you maybe have a conversation with us? Ain't that for real? Go to the center and have it, sit down with us and have a conversation. What are you afraid of? It's a table of conversations, that's ridiculous.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
That's what I think.
The, the reason I'm speaking to this commission this evening is.
We're in recess.
The city has a.
We're in recess.
City-owned piece of property. Nobody called a recess.
I heard, I heard it.
Oh, now he's a politician.
Was it seconded? Do you follow, do you follow Robert's rules in this commission? What do you follow as a governing body? You don't follow the city charter. You don't file general laws in San Antonio. You don't follow the rules in the Department of Environmental Management. You don't follow the rules of the federal government. Is this like Calvin Ball where you just make it up as you go along?
Very confused. Let me just explain to you some things. Pawtucket City Council has never, ever.
Next meeting, we just have Grebby to show up. So when is he gonna show up? Two months now, three months from now? Because I know everybody else shows up here today. So we have to wait for him. Go home.
We're gonna have a recess.
It's like we have to wait for the field to come down. We're not going away. Why don't you just have Grebby and come and run the meeting? So we can get, get past all this nonsense where you're pretending to act on our behalf.
Right, so we don't get hurt, no matter what it turns. That's how it works, Pawtucket.
Go home. Go home to your home, home of shame.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned. Your track record's intact. Hey, Don, if you're watching, hello.
Everybody, they, they called the police and they're coming.
They're not gonna get, that's, that's not a risk.
We're not doing anything.
Of course you called the police. You're cowards. You're a coward.
You're doing, you keep taking the right of course, you're sitting rich.
Just stare me down, I don't think so, boy. On who you are, what you are, why you are. These people have rights, you continue to blame them.
Very comprehensive plan says that you should not to move Morley Field. What are you possibly extending? What is the reason to have a planning commission if you don't follow your own planning, your own plan? What's the point? Other than developing, what's the point? What are you using to establish your decision if you don't use your own comprehensive plan? What is the point of this commission? Action R six, the comprehensive plan, upgrade and improve recreational resources at Morley Field. Action LU five, consider the rezoning of unusable vacant industrial land to open space particularly along the Mashassick. It doesn't say build a new parking lot. It says restore Morley Field.
Restore Morley Field! 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 Hey, just think, tomorrow you're gonna be internet famous. Nah, not at ten o'clock tonight.
For your votes.
This guy works late. Don't be there.
Pawtucket, the land of the free and the home of the brave. Not.
Hey, by the way, you're a great job on that planning commission. Uh, Hasbro, Memorial Hospital, the Paw Sox, the Gam Theater. I mean.
We need to lose the mayor, but we need to.
The generational failure, the government and the mayor you represent. It's astonishing. The only thing surprising about it is the totality of yours and his failure. Right behind the re-elect Grebby and sign was the Memorial Hospital, right on the jumbo truck. Under your leadership, this city's been destroyed. And you take responsibility for it. You can't arrest your way out of it. If you wanna hold your meeting, why don't you just let us all get our two minutes? And then after we have our two minutes, we'll leave, and then you can hold the rest of your meeting.
Public comment.
Why don't you take public comment and then go on with the rest of your meeting?
Why'd you take it off of this meeting? Potentially took it off of this meeting. It's always existed.
So what I understand, you get to not show up and it just gets tabled? Why does it just get dismissed? See you later. See you later, get it dismissed. Don't show up, you have every right. Every right to be. In case anybody sees it, the mayor's number is four eight seven, one four one one. You can go get a permission slip from the mayor. Of course, if you don't do what he says, it's inappropriate, find somebody else. That's how this guy works. What are they gonna do? Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the video up soon as I get on. When the court's dismissed, you don't show up. You just get to continue if you show up. That's what they want. They want all of us to go home so that they can continue to sell out of a field to private development. That's what they want here too. That's the decision. So are we gonna stay here until they resume? Or are we gonna leave because they're in recess? Are we gonna stay and fight? We're gonna stay and fight.
Excuse me, everybody. Uh, I appreciate everybody coming here and being so vocal. And it's great, but apparently we're not gonna get anywhere with them. So, I mean, I'm gonna suggest that we leave and don't want anybody getting arrested or anything like that.
Arrested for what?
This is.
It's like war with, they may try and war with you in soccer.
No, I think, I, everybody can, people can leave if they want, but I'm, I'm interested in seeing what they're gonna make the decision out of their recess. Because we all came here with the expectation that we would have the right to testify for two minutes. That's all we wanted, two minutes. We wanted to say what we wanted to say.
Just like every other planning commission.
And who gives them the right to say that we don't have a voice? How many times are you at your home and you're told you don't have a voice? Don't we feel tired of that in this country? Don't we want a voice in this country? So why can't we have a voice over our public field? This is the most shameful example of our municipal government that doesn't work for the people, looks like. Deploying all the members and then do exactly as you please.
Hey, Pawtucket, we don't worry about those making financial statements. We don't need to actually prove anything, everybody. His word, his boss. Go home. You'll still make your money off the house. You're over five minutes. Does anyone motion for a landing?
Okay, we must continue with five seven five Fountain Street.
Thank you. I think I'll restart from the, from the top. Very briefly. Just have my, oh, my name is Mark Gudrow. I'm the, um, community development manager for the city of Pawtucket.
You can talk louder too.
I come here this evening to address to this board I come here this evening to address to this board what I believe is a very mundane issue, which is the transfer of a city-owned property. This is a piece of property that the city has acquired recently, having sat there undeveloped and deserted out on 575 Fountain Street. The city, you know, unfortunately, the city's not really in the business of redeveloping and rehabbing residential properties.
Really?
So the city is asking that Pawtucket Redevelopment Agency take on this piece of property for redevelopment. And this needs to go in front of the Properties Commission of the, of the City Council. And we're just asking this board to consider the appropriate move to hand this property from city ownership to PRA ownership. So we can see a speedy renovation of this property.
I'm not talking to you. Talk to me, this dude over here. He wanted to go talk to me. You could go talk to the white guy.
Just a question, how did the city council?
He's our talker. He ain't got nothing to talk about. I don't even know why.
This happened before I just started working for the city, but my understanding is that the city has.
Literally.
Properties are being auctioned off, intended to be auctioned off by the state. The city has rights of first refusal. They decided it was a freely drafted property at that time. And chose to buy.
I say we stay here until the.
Plus at least 258,000, or this is a substantial size of property.
So y'all, y'all good? Y'all ready to bring your kids, turn this up?
Undeveloped and, you know, basically ignored in the interim.
When was that? When was that sale?
I believe in 2022, April of 2022, if memory serves.
It's been vacancies.
There's been vacancies, yes, and it's unfortunately been broken into, vandalized, kids drinking in there, homeless squatting in. So we're looking for speedy redevelopment to restore this residential neighborhood.
Can Steph put that back up?
Question for Steph. Whether this is the typical process for, for properties like this, or for generally properties? Are we, are we always required to vote on transfer of land from the Pawtucket Development Authority? Is that City Council's? Like, what's the process from here on?
It's not, the only way that property is transferred, whether it's.
Hold on.
We are, we are tasked with making sure that we're on this, on this.
After this, they've got your city council as well. The city council have to approve as well.
City council, yes.
How much of the city are you taking?
I'd still love to see the map, but I have one more. Do you have a sense of what the Pawtucket Development Authority plans, what plans, what the plans are for the property?
At this point in time, it's, it's redeveloped. The interior has been vandalized, the exterior is falling apart. The folks in the neighborhood are very concerned about this delicate property. And we want to react to it. Pawtucket Redevelopment Agency is, that's their job, rehabilitation, redevelopment of properties. The city doesn't really have an arm to do that outside of the Redevelopment Agency.
So the city continues to own the property, they're not going to sell it to somebody beforehand? The city's going to be in charge of the renovation and the redevelopment?
No, the Redevelopment Agency.
That's right, the Redevelopment Agency can be in charge of redeveloping it. They're not, they're not selling it as, to somebody else.
Correct.
Can't hear you.
It could be either. We're seriously considering this property for public use, but, you know, we will need to see. There has been a designer into the building. So I think it's all going to come down to the imagination and the, you know, best use from a professional designer.
So we don't know who it's going to sell to. The city paid for it. We don't know how it's going to be developed. We don't know how it's going to be taxed, we don't have financial statements. Cash, except development, no promises. Developers have made a lot of.
Is there anyone that will comment on 575 Fountain? Comment out?
Is there public comment?
Make a motion.
I would have a public comment on this, that way. I'll sign up if I can.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Of course, right. I'll withhold my, my motion right now. I don't know what I can do tonight, this way.
You should publish it, what?
My name is Patrick, I'm from the organization. In the course of my business, I've covered some of the property development by this agency. And before this body could sue, there should be a number of questions asked. Number one, I believe that this body should at least provide representation, I'm not a lawyer. Number one, whether or not you can, clearly you've got all the strict government on this property. Also, my experience has been with some private, I'm sorry, residential properties that we develop. Developers, and I read the financials, developers have bought, made a lot of money. So right now, what we're doing here is to transfer property blindly to an agency that doesn't, that makes, that makes track. And we don't know how it's going to work, we don't know how it's going to go, but trust the process. Which is, by the way, I don't know if the same agency was involved in the statement, but how's that? Any developments that kind of, only one A, that's actually going to pay for it and stuff? So I would say as a matter of conscience, if you diligence and respecting the city authority, we're not going to. That you should want to know where the property is going to have some type of outline, rather than just, again, follow this administration blindly. Because you see how that's working out here? Not so well. So we really don't know. There's no commitments. Just like the building that took part of the property, possession to the actual Morley Field. Lots of vague promises, we're going to employ lots of complicated, so we're not. We actually have, is that in mind? No, we don't. This is, this is why people don't trust you or believe you, because there's no appropriate review on any of this stuff. They just wing it. It rubber stamps what this administration does. And if it wasn't for the incredible generation of failure, of everything this administration has done, you just have to go around the city. Then I might have some commitment to credibility. Perhaps if there's a new mayor, there will be some credibility, but there isn't. So my question, and by the way, you are allowed to answer questions under the general laws of Sayre Island. I'll quote you, I'll quote you the, my question to you is, what financial diligence has been done on this property? It is not renewed. Nothing in the City of Pawtucket is at all even remotely retained. Everything needs to be checked out, every rock and every crevice. So my question is, what diligence has been done in regards to the transfer of this property, which the city has paid for? And my other question, gentlemen, is the city, I guess according to what you tell me, the city paid about 250,000, 260,000 dollars. Is any of that going to be paid back to the city? Or is this just going to go into a black hole? And we'll figure out 10 years from now how it will develop? Those are two questions I would like to ask.
If I may speak to the gentleman's question, I will be happy to follow up with this commission. Follow up to the gentleman's question, I'll be happy to report back to this agency. I don't think we're going to know anything until a designer comes in, evaluates the property. I am not a designer. I know, I know very little about interior design, structural limitations, et cetera. But if this committee requests a follow-up, I'd be happy to follow up. And, but at this point in time, this is, this is just going through the steps so we can take it out of a, you know, a stagnant city-owned building and move it to an agency that's tasked with, you know, rehabilitation.
And if Eric has rehabbed this other, has property.
Over many, many years, yes.
To make your decision without any further questions, you're physically responsible.
So, so just, just a quick, so what you're doing basically is taking a careless property and making sure that it's safe for the community of Pawtucket, so that no one can get injured by going in that and being touched on some of that.
Your boss, your boss.
I, I would, I would agree that it is, yes, it's a safety concern for the neighborhood. It is polite on the neighborhood. So we, and the residents of that neighborhood have been concerned for, for many years. And we're looking to, you know, the time has come to move on to this property.
Is there any assertive proposal to finish that rehab of your property? About, of more.
Mr. Green?
So, has the, has the city attempted to sell this property to a private, to private ownership over the last couple of years?
Pawtucket Central Falls Development was approached with the, with the opportunity to acquire this property. I don't know if prices were talked or not, this was before my tenure with the city. But if you, you must know Pawtucket Central Falls Development, they, they do a lot of work developing low demand income housing for the city. They looked at it and decided it wasn't feasible to their purposes.
I'm, I'm just, just trying to get a sense of whether it was, whether private developers would, whether there was an attempt to allow private development of it, whether the city put it up for sale to try to, try to get that? And then I guess my other question would be, so we vote on it, then the city council votes on it, then it gets transferred to the PRA. Is the PRA considering other options for this property? I mean, I'm looking at where it is, it's literally right against the highway. I'm sure there's a reason why it hasn't sold or why there's a challenge. I would just think about, is there opportunities for public good here? Tear down the building, it's right on the corner, tear down the building and make a little pocket park or something like that. Is, are there other options being looked at by the PRA other than just rehabbing it? And, you know, because my concern is the city's already put 260,000 dollars into this. PRA is going to put a couple hundred thousand dollars more. Is it going to actually make, are they going to be able to sell it for what they, what they're paying for?
I think if you look at property values in the neighborhood, that, that's a likely, a likely possibility. I'd be happy to bring your concerns to the PRA in terms of, you know, demolition of the property. However, you know, I, I know the idea was to rehab this otherwise decent home with good bones to, you know, for neighborhood purification.
I'd like to ask Steph, if, if this, this property is transferred to PRA, any further development of that property would also have to come in front of the planning commission or zoning to, for approvals anyway, am I, am I correct?
Depends. Smaller scale development would probably be administrative, not everything of scale comes to look like that. Smaller scale doesn't.
But zoning, yes. It needs to comply with all zoning.
Again, all right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer.
Motion has been passed by Commissioner Talley. Second. Second by Commissioner Esselson. Will call both Commissioner Esselson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Orad?
Yes.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallow?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallow?
Yes.
Thank you for your attention to this matter this evening.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to close Pawtucket City Planning Commission meeting.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Talley. Seconded by Commissioner Orad. Will call Commissioner Esselson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Orad?
Yes.
Commissioner Brogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Talley?
Yes.